Oh. Still open. What time are we at right now?
About another twenty minutes.
Two, two early then. Well, that's how it goes sometimes. Better early than late.
They actually have that on the Albany Street Bridge. If you ever notice. They have the chain link.
I think if you're, if you're a little serious about doing something.
It was like, like you just kind of like walk along the edge to see it, to test your balance too.
I wonder, I wonder what's gonna happen to this young man.
Hopefully gets the helping hands. That's the, that's the important thing.
The people who's a husband and daughter, that's why. I don't sustain them. He should have never been able to shoot up like a rat. But if you look at the, uh... The body.
Yeah.
It comes out of his grass and dirt, three quarters of a mile. It's like a rat. So he takes it and he slid it in. And with him. So that's, for me, that would be insane. Seems like the kid is a hundred percent totally a fool. It is, you know. You don't probably, I mean, because I've seen car and truck. In front of my best. Nothing. How's it? Getting out, hitting the guardrails and beating their, you know, toll on their cars. And I always say, the bridge is made up of. Breezes before the road. Just some sort of thing. And of course, the way that concrete goes from asphalt to concrete. It's been like that. There was a police officer in Nebraska who was hit years ago. It was an accident. Yeah, just a regular one. He went out and then he got hit by a car. And went up over this, uh... He was hit over a corner.
Did he, ten more feet? Did he survive it?
Yeah, ten more feet. He's, uh, you know. Tore a bustle. Neck and back injuries. Clotswalk. Police officers weren't there.
Help me a flag. God bless the veterans. Many veterans went to war. And they were drafted, um, they did not consent to it. They were threatened and intimidated to go to war. Never forget that. Never forget that it happened before and it can happen again.
His mother, uh, sister laughed. He looks like, it's not funny. Oh, come on, we're sitting, it's hilarious. I think I jumped, I had my gun, so what do you think I said, boy, then go. Yeah. And then he started crying and I think he was talking. He had a change in his side. Tomorrow, then tomorrow, then this. So.
I've never had a fight before. I don't, that can't be good. By the way, probably gonna get a.
That's right here.
I'm a camera.
Some situations, yeah. I really am. This guy is squishy. We get scared, it's like somebody's shivering. Dude, up here. Right.
Yeah, right. Yeah.
We will see, are they stationed at every council meeting or? Or is it just this meeting that someone else? Ah. They're just administered.
No.
Yeah, I like to go by those.
Okay.
I don't want, I probably don't see what's on.
A license.
Yeah, we don't have a big, but it's all right. Real stiff man, all day. Second grand job.
Boy, girl?
Uh, boy.
Boy.
Oh, yes, I mean, you know, it's any time. One day she's on the beach, but they look down at her.
It was all, sun, the fastest moving infrastructure on the beach nine years ago.
Walking by the door, enjoying.
It's a small, great weather.
Four, she looked up. She felt a little.
Good time.
This is, this is.
The worst. Good time.
Mommy after her phone.
I imagine it like a. They're like some napkins.
Exactly. They're washed away.
I'll keep them. Not all keepers.
Oh, well, just waiting. And she was all, just go to the corner, not your first thing in the morning. Just find the doctors for it. The doctor, exceptional. I was just reminded before the.
All the past stuff.
I mean, it's me.
If you used as long as.
Yeah. But a little fifty five.
The place being. Just at the time.
He had no time to work.
I want Jim in and Larry. Let me make much better society.
Small bridge, like.
That's my size.
Where you go, but like seventeen feet.
Yes.
Hundred cam in a second.
Four hundred bridges.
Yeah.
Hundred bridges. Hundred feet. Always.
Yeah, especially like hundred. The one lane bridges, you can't see that coming traffic. Oh, my God. This is great, we both are forcing. I remember the last one, like twenty years ago. That is more than.
Parked at the state P O T. You know, they prevent them to clear these ninety lane bridges.
I mean, this is. Just call it one.
Yeah, like everyone. It's not a break, everyone's concerned. He's small. Hey, there's a type on. God forbid.
It's just like, just like.
Court, so it's worth it.
That bridge should be water. But then they told her, you can't do that because the state's. They want theirs, she doesn't want theirs. But you would think that was gonna stop. I think the county did that two years ago.
Oh, yeah. That was a shame.
Well, some of these bridges that have a point of origin, one of those bridges that sort of turn so that the.
I think that now, now, don't.
Right.
The bridge, yeah, I don't think a hundred percent is what the rivers.
When I used to drive over that one, I would go to rock rivers back thirty years ago.
Aren't my mouth, so I wonder what reaction. They're giving.
So ridiculous. I mean, it's hard. Very exciting. In South Amboy. By the local state, there's that. And there's, um, there is a border pass.
And then I'm wearing.
So.
Yeah, it's very easy. Like holding the bear's head.
You gotta wear a gold suit. So that most others, uh, most of my job is, uh, love them. That's what they do to take away. I should scrape the side thing. So. I mean, today, I would never. But I'm just gonna find a living here.
What's that thing's for the? Like, why do you have these streets?
Right, and you should go park. Another couple.
That's how I read.
Good for you.
You scared for civic duty? Take part in your local.
I haven't been to a vote of meetings this week, so I figure.
Because I have to forgive me, it's not normal. I have to go to all these. Most people, yeah, most people don't have to go to them.
Right, great. Uh, please, thanks.
That sounds great. They will look in the body email, they're having, said Nobel laureate. Son of a, they're, they said.
Oh, yeah, because they've got a new one.
Oh, they have a new one. They have so many. They'll have. Prove so many can go down the process, you know. Prepare for the show, the gang back to.
Mr. I froze a soldier.
Requested an amendment.
Let's, let's go, Mike.
Tom usually finds a nice spot to bat. Tries to hide. He used to sit in front, that's all.
My country trip down.
Yeah. He didn't notice it was something different, but I thought that was like from the shower. Congratulations.
Can't turn into two. But it's not. A shell.
He was somebody that said your. Something got on that work. Yeah. I, uh, that's I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's why.
No, you're good. We're really fine. We're all the same.
I, me, you and that spoke, I knew you were gonna take care of that.
I'm good, babe. Knowing these, uh, who knows, I tell them knowing these, you're not.
We come in peace.
He's still right here. I'm just not right here. Come on, Seth.
He's gonna be a crop top.
Come on.
So do I.
Yeah. Oh. It's a shopping. What could it be? Five. What's that? Pick us up. Over on Joyce County. No, tomorrow we have a meeting. I'm sorry. Flight ten, flight four, ten. All time. And we need somewhere. Somewhere, I don't know, somewhere north of Philly, right? I, I, I.
If we miss anything, it's a great point. So if those people just happen to know, people talk to me about the air conditioning.
That's all. I'm looking at it. Registering your.
You know, you don't have to adjust that.
Which is cool.
Can I ask a question? Are your body cameras on when you came in the room?
Are body cameras on?
Yeah, are your bodies? You had your body cameras on when you came in the room?
I'm sorry?
You had your body cameras on when you came in the room?
Yes.
Is there any criminal activity going on at the moment?
Not that I'm aware of.
Are you aware Attorney General Directive twenty twenty one dash one says that? You're not, you're not supposed to be recording people when they're in the course of their First Amendment protected activities. So I hope we're not violating the tech Attorney General's Directive right now. Is it standard operating procedures for police officers to be at every council meeting? I'll ask Charlie Croweville about that one. Um.
No problem.
I'm not gonna hold it against you if someone was startled and asked for there to be a presence. I mean, that's no big deal about that, but. I, I do find it concerning that when we walk in the room, we have our body cameras on and no. No criminal activity had been. You didn't have enough time to call because when you saw me, you came in the room. Okay. Well, that's okay for you to do, so that's your right. I apologize if you felt that way, but. Okay. I will be open requesting a body camera. Uh, Police Officer Gomez, three, six.
Three, six.
Three, six, six. Police Officer Drozo, three, four, seven. And Detective James, two, six, zero. Okay. Now that I let you, uh, let you know I don't have any nefarious motivations or intentions. What other possible reason could there be for having the body camera on? Do you believe there to be a health emergency? Someone having a mental health crisis at the moment? I'm not here to give anyone a hard time, I just find it concerning, you know. I was happy enough, I didn't come in here.
It's a little disconcerting you're wearing a mask. Just as, as a person who's coming in, it's a little disturbing. Just give you my opinion on that.
I apologize that most of the people that come to this meeting is government employees and they would, they would be characterized. Something like that. Superior officer on the scene?
Sir?
Superior officer on the scene? Is there criminal activity going on right now?
No.
Not at all? Is there a reason for the body cameras to be activated?
They're not taking police action.
Huh?
They're not taking police action at the moment.
They're not taking police action? Is there a reason to take police action?
No.
Because Attorney General, uh, Guideline Directive twenty twenty one dash one says when someone's in the course of their First Amendment protected activities, not to record them.
I can't hear you behind your mask.
Attorney General Directive twenty twenty one dash one states that? You're not supposed to be recording people in the course of their First Amendment protected activities. They told me that they, they, they walked in here with their. They're all off?
Yes, sir.
But they were on earlier before you came in.
And they're off now.
Okay.
If they have to take police action, they'll turn their cameras on by my instructions.
Okay. I'm sorry, I don't want to block your view. I hope no one was snuck into my bags when I turned around. I will be open requesting the photo that the government employee took of me. Hey, what's up, Charles? Can I ask a question? Is it standard operating procedure for police officers to be at every meeting? Because they came in here with their body worn cameras activated. That's Charlie Croweville, my opponent today, recorder. My competitor.
Good afternoon, we're gonna start a agenda review session of the public council meeting of April seventeen. We have a pool of units. We have recorded correspondents, we have colleagues, we have recorded people who are in community events and services. We have ordinances of the committee. We have ordinance two, a major program that we'd like to have organized on the city of New Brunswick. Parking zone. For any cat person. Number two, an ordinance two, the operation of the plan of the public system at East, so it's a transitional development plan area in the city of New Brunswick. And we have an ordinance on first reading. An ordinance to exceed the municipal political orientation limits and establish a cap. We have resolutions one to twenty six. A good amendment, a good amendment. Number two, a good payment, three authorized vehicle for the inside sale certificates. Four authorized signature of the side of each one application for community. Part of a better resolution, you know, eight to three, one eight. We will create a new basis of legal. Six, a good payment for emergency treatment, the department of engineering for the works. Pursuit backup. Seven, a good request for use of city property requested by nineteen thousand community school. Eight, a good request for use of city property requested by McKinley Community School. Nine, a good request for use of city property for flexible power focus events. Ten, a good request for use of city property by Rutgers University. Eleven, a good request of city property requested by the US tomorrow. Twelve, a good request of city, use of city property requested by California State District. Thirteen, a good request for use of city property requested by Etoro Entertainment. Fourteen, a good request for use of city property and sidewalk use requested by Asia Williams of Town Avenue. Fifteen, a good request for use of city property requested by Chi, Absolution Sigma National Latin Solid Aid. Sixteen, a good relaxation of the signal experience and work culture requested by Maxine Turnworth. Seventeen, authorized and one professional service agreement with group things to see L O C. Eighteen, a good relaxation of the signals owners and work culture requested by Steven B C fourteen and reading Inc. Nineteen, a good relaxation of the signals of more requested by eight.
So usually April has a lot of awareness, so at this time I decided to talk a little bit about the stress awareness more and its aim at bringing attention to the negative impact of stress. And it's a good reminder for all of us to pause, breathe, and concentrate on our well-being. Also, we could reflect on how stress impacts all of us and how can we explore and learn healthy coping mechanisms with even stress. So I encourage you today to take time to practice self-care, self-care, especially the city of New Brunswick's self-care is important, self-care, and support each other while managing stress. Thank you.
Councilmember Gasanilla?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin?
Yes.
Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Council President Escobar?
Yes. Director, as the correspondence have been directed to the appropriate departments?
Yes, my president. The correspondence received by the city park culture was forwarded to the appropriate department for further action.
Okay, at this time, we have public hearing regarding the community benefits agreement. We have Mr. Kennedy, one of his colleagues, Mr. Paladino.
Yes. Madam Council President, members of council, this matter is actually a first impression before council or a community that has done this before, the reason being the state legislature enacted the New Jersey Economic Recovery Act of 2020 establishing the New Jersey Aspire Act to encourage economic development, growth, job growth, retention, and community partnerships across the state of New Jersey. As we all come to know, the H1 project, also known as the KELACE, number one, was approved last year under the Aspire Program. As a condition of that approval, the developer of the New Jersey Innovation Associates Urban Renewal LLC is required to enter into a community benefits agreement with the New Jersey Economic Development Authority and the city of New Brunswick where the project is located. In connection with tonight's presentation and hearing for questions and answers, there are three areas of contribution that are proposed in connection with the community benefits agreement. They're set forth in some detail in Resolution 51. I know that Mr. Paladino in his group here, representing a developer, and I don't want to take any thunder away from him or his staff members, to explain the three facets of the community benefits agreement. And then, as expected, the public should have any questions, you can open it up to questions, and then conclude with closing that particular period. Mr. Paladino?
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Council President, members of council. It's a pleasure to be here. This is not only a matter of first impression here in Brunswick, I believe it's only the second community benefits agreement that's been considered by any council in the state of New Jersey. And I'm not sure how many more will be done because the legislature amended the program and the Aspire Program that does residential does no longer ask, is required to do community benefits. But since, Mr. Kennedy, it's my first page, not the rest of the second page, but we are recommending three contributions to the city of New Brunswick on the statute. The first being, for the next two years of our construction period, continuing with two additional classes of our training and hire program, which does take individuals in the city and the surrounding communities, put them to a training program. We've been very successful at getting those individuals into the building trade, into the construction business. That will amount to a monetary contribution of approximately $200,000 over the next two years. The second program that we would like to continue to support for summers of '24 and '25 is a program that's run by the Youth Advocate Program and the Leaders in Training. So in '24, '25, we would, I think we've done this for two summers already, we'll do the next two years and, you know, hopefully encourage others in the community and other developers to do this, to continue to make this kind of a regular program, but that is a monetary value of $206,000 over the next two years. And then, one that I find interesting, because it's nothing that we've been involved for, is that we are recommending putting a million dollars in a trust account for, at the city, at the city's discretion, at the mayor's discretion, to use over the next ten years. He can use it over the next two years if he likes, the next three years if he likes, but those programs, for programs that the statute specifically talks about, is that programs that are intended to improve the community's health, safety, access to opportunities, recreational opportunities, environmental resilience, environmental quality, the general quality of life in the city, and other locally prioritized community programs. So instead of us picking and choosing, this allows the city to have that money, we'll put it into a trust account, an interest-bearing account, the interest will go to the city, and we'll do that within the next sixty days, within sixty days of the document being signed, and at any time at that point, the city can just request us in writing to, that they want $10,000 for Code Blue or $150,000 for a park, and then we would immediately send it to the city for that reason. Or we're directed, if it was directed to a community group. So I think it really is a flexible grant program, but I think it'd be quite effective. Any questions you have?
Any questions from my colleagues? Put out in the floor, please. Thank you, Mr. Paladino. At this time, we are prepared to open the public hearing from this public comments and the presentation of the public benefits agreement. You may come up, you have up to five minutes, one person, one time limit.
Good evening, Councilwoman Cradville, the one today. I wanted to ask how the trust fund would be administered. Based on the representations I just heard, the mayor could write a letter or have money expended for any purpose he chooses. Would the council play any role? Is there any, you know, controls or checks and balances that you want to see on this billion dollars?
Can I put one additional thing? The statute requires the appointment of, and the mayor hasn't, I don't believe has done it yet, of three members of the public. And I think it specifically says someone who has a business in town, someone who lives in town, and I'm not sure what the third is. Every year, they need to report to the EDA on the progress of any donations that are made, so they'll be reporting to the state of how it's done. The statute is, I defer Mr. Kennedy, the statute, some of it with respect to how it's administered vis-à-vis the different parts of the municipal.
Mr. Kennedy, do you have anything to add?
No, Mr. Paladino says exactly. The statute does provide for a three-person, the member board, which reviews all the requests. It is highly regulated and monitored, I believe, yet, if the spending has to come through the parameters of the statute.
Thank you for the information. I guess I'm curious if the three-member board would have open public meetings or, you know, public input, any sort of regular schedule or structure?
I do not see that in the statute.
I haven't read it many times, I feel I should go back and take a look. That board is, lies in...
Right, but nothing preventing them from having open public meetings?
Well, this is something, Mr. Cradville, we hear you, and I'm pretty sure that we will be able to give updates on some of the things that we have in the programs.
Yeah, I guess the genesis of my concerns, I know we have a number of boards and commissions already in the city, and some of them are not functioning, or at least not functioning as originally intended. I know the taxi commission's an example. I know there's others that have not been following through on the schedule set forth or, you know, being active, so I'm concerned if this ends up being a, you know, three-person board that all they do is they sign a document once a year to, you know, rubber stamp what choices the administration's made, rather than being an actual venue to gather input, make smart decisions about what to do with the money, and make those decisions in public so that everybody can see how those decisions were arrived at and what amounts are going to go to what thing, instead of having to wait for an annual report. So I would just encourage the city to structure this in a way where there is meaningful public input and actually, you know, in this room or somewhere else public, a chance to witness these decisions being made about how to spend this funding. That's all.
You got any other comments?
Yes, and I have to say I would agree what Mr. Cradville is just saying due to where somewhere we can keep an eye on what the money is going towards, but my main meeting for stepping up due to where I heard the word Code Blue. I would say again, even though yes, it was increased $60,000, $150,000 due to where, like I say, wow, the only hole, what, 27, due to where I seen the mark of being 664 homeless on the census report that I seen, even though I know it's much higher than that with the homeless, due to where we got over 3,000 guests. But I would say hoping, as I mentioned before, something more to help out with Code Blue due to where some people don't feel safe commuting their stuff and they're being stolen. So like I said, my idea to Code Blue and also Mr. Jones, where Pete Jones, he was saying people were asking some type of lockers, like I said, more space, due to where, what, 27 spaces for someone to sleep. I decided to say we can do better, and I mentioned as well, due to where you have enough men's shelters, but it's time for New Brunswick to have a women's shelter, due to where I'm seeing a lot of women, and then also a lot of women coming toward to me, asking, when are they going to do a women's shelter in New Brunswick? But like I said, my main thoughts is due to where what Mr. Cradville will say, I would love to see, due to where, what this money is going to go to, keep it on balance. And for example, the reason why I'm saying that, I know the city received over $324,000 to help for addiction, but I still haven't heard any word, what, what is it going towards? What is it helping? So yes, for example, yes, I would like Mr. Cradville to say, keep everything on record due to where I have to say, every person that works for the city is not honest.
As he was said before, this is something that we would like, we have experts in our negotiations and the mayor, as we know this a long time, so I'm pretty sure he knows that. And with the panel that he has as advisor, kind of will utilize those funds to work most needed for our residents, several of our residents, so I'm sure of that. And if, once it starts, everything, I will ask for, I will give updates and see how things are going. And thank you, Mr. Paladino, thank you for being here.
I'm Council President, actually, the statute does provide updates to council and the mayor, with the number of public comment, I would ask this for motion to close the public comment hearing relative to this matter.
Motion. Councilmember Gasanilla?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin?
Yes.
Councilmember Sephora Ludwig?
Yes.
Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Council President Escobar?
Upstream.
duly noted.
We have orders for discussion of second reading, we have ordinance number four two four oh one, and ordinance two, an ordinance of development by General Orders of the City of New Brunswick, Title X, this is a reference to pardon zones for handicapped persons, adding on to six full superlative, and three twenty-three Somerset Street. Any other questions? We have the order to open the floor for the public hearing, this ordinance only, and then we'll have the public hearing for the six council committees' particular ordinance. See you, John?
Moving on. Seven. Councilmember Gasanilla?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin?
Yes.
Councilmember Sephora Ludwig?
Yes.
Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Council President Escobar?
Yes.
Then we have ordinance number four two, because I want to have to add a redevelopment plan, because we've seen so much of the transition of redevelopment plan, and we have to be different now. Mr. Kennedy, I used to be here, I want to say to you, oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Before, please, one, can I just give a brief overview of this particular ordinance, please?
Sure, certainly. So the proposed redevelopment plan incorporates an area of five smaller subareas that are somewhat sandwiched between Easton Avenue, Hamilton Street, and Somerset Street, and then kind of anchored along Hardenberg. There's sort of a mixed bag of different targeted redevelopments, depending on the block sizes and the density that might be able to be accommodated there, as well as potential for hospital expansion, mixed-use development in general, here transit, and that's sort of the general overlay of the planned workings.
Thank you. Any other questions? At this time, we're ready to open the public hearing on the ordinance only, you have up to five minutes, one person, one time limit. Any other questions to address the council or use for your experience?
Good evening, Charlie Cradville, the one today. I wanted to ask where one can get a copy of the plan.
To the leaders.
Mr. Cradville, I'll send it to him by the end of the week. Probably not a long one. Oh, yeah, I do think going forward, when you have such an important item on your agenda like this, the document itself should be made public. I had, unfortunately, unable to attend the planning board meeting where this was mentioned, and I think it did pop up on the planning department's portion of the city website for, you know, maybe a month or so, around that time, but when I looked earlier today, I couldn't find it there anymore, it's not in your agenda documents, it's not in your packet, and, you know, it's nice to hear a little sympathy about it before the discussion. I would like to have the document available, but frankly, I don't see why all redevelopment plans are not posted at either the city website or the redevelopment agency website all the time. You know, those are important, you know, sort of documents, especially in New Brunswick. So we hope to see more transparency in the future, and thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, and these organs?
Um, so let's...
by General Ordinance System of the City of the Plaza, five ten, this is in reference to pardon zones for handicapped persons, adding on to six full superlative, and three twenty-three Somerset Street. Any other federal council members have any questions? We have the order to open the floor for a public hearing on this ordinance only. The general of the public meetings for the six council committees, particular ordinance. See you now.
Move the order. Second. Councilmember Gasamia.
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin.
Yes.
Councilmember Sephora Ludwig, yes. Council Vice President Anderson.
Yes.
Council President Escobar.
Yes.
Then we have ordinance zero four two, because I want to have two of the redevelopment plans, and we've seen so much of the residential redevelopment plan, and we have been considering that. Mr. Calabini, if I used to be here, I want to say to you, uh, oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Before, please, one, can I just give a brief overview of this particular ordinance, please?
Sure, certainly. Um, so the proposal redevelopment plan incorporates an area of five smaller subareas that are somewhat sandwiched between Easton Avenue, Hamilton Street, and Somerset Street, uh, and then kind of anchored along Hardenberg. There's sort of a mixed bag of different targeted redevelopments, depending on the block sizes and the, uh, density that might be able to be accommodated there, as well as potential for hospital expansion, mixed-use development in general, uh, here transit. And, uh, that's sort of the general overlay of the, uh, of the plan's workings.
Thank you. Any other federal council members have any questions or comments? Please, our ordinance. At this time, we are trying to open the polling hearing on the ordinance only, we have up to five minutes, one person, one panel. If you have other questions to address the council or useful news, please, the poll.
Good evening, Charlie Cradville, who runs the project today. I wonder, I guess, where one can get a copy of the, uh, the the plan.
To the latest.
Mr. Carr, if it lights, I'll send it to him by the end of the week. Probably not a long one. Okay. And I do think going forward, when you have such an important item on your agenda like this, the document itself should be made public. I had, unfortunately, unable to attend the planning board meeting where this was, uh, mentioned, and I think it did pop up on the planning department's portion of the city website for, you know, maybe a month or so, around that time, but when I looked earlier today, I couldn't find it there anymore. It's not in your agenda documents, it's not in your packet, and, uh, you know, it's nice to hear a little sympathy about it before the discussion. I would like to have the document available on the web. Frankly, I don't see why all redevelopment plans are not posted at either the city website or the redevelopment agency website all the time. Um, you know, those are important, you know, sort of, uh, documents, uh, especially in the project. So we hope to see more transparency in the future, and, uh, thank you.
Anybody else want to call it? Yes, and these ordinance.
So let's see, what, um... So what's going on here, um, due to where I heard different locations, but, uh, what is this, I have to take care of something, what is this based on, over that area?
This is the latest.
Yeah, certainly. So it's a redevelopment plan with a diff, with a five different subareas between, uh, Hamilton Street, uh, Somerset Street, and Easton Avenue. A portion of one of the subareas would be for hospital expansion potential, one of them, actually, the other four really for mixed-use developments, the rental for commercial, uh, residential on top. Depending on the block sizes, some of them are accommodating larger apartment building styles, some of them are accommodating smaller apartment building style, depending on the sizing potential of being able to accommodate circulation and other factors. So one of them is just quickly off the top of my head, the corner of Easton and Somerset, where the bar is, not at the end of the other end, I don't remember what the bar is called. Uh, there's the corner of Conduct in Somerset, I mean, the corner of Conduct in Easton, small site, corner of Hardenberg in Conduct, big-ish site, corner of Hardenberg and Hamilton Street, behind the parking deck of the Cancer's Two, large site, and, uh, corner of Somerset Street and Hardenberg Street, relatively large site with potential for hospital expansion into that area.
Thank you.
So talking about knocking more property down, due to where, like I said, the Lord puts me, gives me, uh, to be at the right spot, due to where I was curious why I saw inspections going on on Somerset, due to where, what, I was saying to myself, wow, I guess, okay, due to where the way being marked, so certain areas, due to where, saying, wow, are we, here we are knocking down more, 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 uh, more buildings, what, for Robert Wood Johnson or Rutgers? Come on, enough with the demolishing. Like I said, wow, you, you, this excuse it, due to where, what, you keep saying, what, you don't have enough officers on duty, just like what I said, wow, you don't have enough events on duty, enough with all this reconstruction, due to where, wow, beauty, as a, as a forty-seven-year-old resident, born and raised, beauty is not taking away away the crime in New Brunswick. And please, I think you ought to, you start thinking about it, due to where, enough with all of these buildings. I think it was a lesson learned, and I said it in the planning board, what, for an earthquake, due to where New Jersey normally doesn't get earthquakes, what, for April, April fifth, due to where, wow, people running out of Robert Wood Johnson, people running out of the Helldress, do not, not, due to where, come on, enough with building. I think that was the first warning, enough with all these planning buildings that you still have to keep going, but at least six more buildings, enough with knocking down, trying to make New Brunswick beautiful again, because it's not going to make New Brunswick beautiful again, what, with crime, shoe shooting, what, drugs, homelessness, enough.
Anybody else want to call it? We should try to raise the council ordinance. See you now. Move your next second.
Councilmember Gasamia.
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin.
Yes.
Councilmembers Sephora Ludwig.
Yes.
Council Vice President Anderson.
Yes.
Council President Escobar.
Yes.
Then we have ordinance, the first reading, we have ordinance zero four two four oh three, and ordinance two, the municipal program of recreation ordinance is now in the category.
Move the ordinance, sending that in first, and then four, at five thirty, please, and get that done. Councilmember Gasamia.
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin.
Yes.
Councilmember Sephora Ludwig.
Yes.
Council Vice President Anderson.
Yes.
Council President Escobar.
Yes. Then we have resolutions one through twenty-six. Before we go into any, as many questions, only, uh, comments on the resolutions, I'm going to ask, uh, Mr. Cruz, if you could just give a little highlights of, uh, resolution twenty-three, as I say, uh, in the beginning of the meeting, on the agenda review session, this is just introduction of the budget, hopefully, you could all be taken into light there, so that we can give a little highlights of what we are introducing to do.
Sure. President, members of council, the post-budget for twenty twenty-four has been submitted with one hundred eleven million, seven hundred seventy-four, seven hundred fifty-four dollars expenditures, supported by a levy of thirty-nine million, seven hundred three thousand dollars. The budget contains all regular municipal services expended over the years, expanded over the years. In addition, the budget calls for the hiring of thirteen police officers, three of whom will leave the streets this summer, ten will enter the academy in August, outfitting our firefighters with additional safety equipment, expanding programming and offerings to residents in recreation, teen center, and senior center. The budget also provides a four point five million dollar increase in healthcare insurance accommodations, uh, total reflecting to pre-COVID numbers in terms of healthcare costs, while still complying with the appropriation levy requirements that support by our state statutes. In addition to meeting city operational demands, the budget will continue to make investments that improve the infrastructure that residents rely on, the quality of life on their neighborhoods. Our park improvement program continues with the start of construction of Liberty Square Park, the replacement resurfacing of hard surface playing courts, including, uh, for pit wall courts. The installation of newly purchased playground equipment in multiple city parks. Plans for include the renovation of Howard's Baker Park as a wager, one point nine million dollar application to create acres. At stewards of the city's buildings and facilities, this year's budget projects, uh, to the, this year's projects, including historic renovation, the iconic brick facade of Unit Five on Hardenberg Street, and interior improvements and repairs of the pre, pre-public library, its elevators, and HVAC systems. In addition to all this going on underground, the city will be just as active underground, replacing cremials and water mains in areas around our buildings, the avenues, the Amm Streets, there's the avenue, Powell Javon, Richmond Street, Pauling Street, the Net Street, High Street, Jones Avenue, Paul Robinson Boulevard, Melvin Street, Fisher Street. The roadways for each of these projects will be paved when completed. Other streets scheduled to be repaved this year include Lewis Street, Portland, Van Dyke Avenue, Rose Side Avenue, Maple Street, Loner Street, and the water street, Sanford and Harms Square. With recent projected long-term shifts in temperature and weather patterns, new to the city budget this year is stormwater utility, intended to raise indirect funds to combat unprecedented flooding that threatens the lives and properties of our residents. The stormwater utility will provide the needs of developing a long-term stormwater capital improvement master plan, address additional air needs, reduce litter pollution in the city's waterways, and provide additional resources to address the impacts of flooding to building and building property. This stormwater utility will generate revenue to cover the cost of these services by placing a fee on public and private properties based on the amount of stormwater that runs off and drains into the city's stormwater management systems. Historically, the payment for these expenses was drawn from property taxes, on private property, and not based on the amount of stormwater runoff of property generates and discharges to the city. It is anticipated that this stormwater utility will be able to generate approximately one point five million dollars at a modest rate for all property owners. Funds, funds for the stormwater utility will be placed in an enterprise fund that will be restricted for the use of the funds only for stormwater management and related activities. The city will develop this system in conjunction with the normal budget process and, of course, with authorization through the city council. We have also, will also continue to benefit from revitalization efforts as recent development projects realize the increase of five hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars in revenue in this budget, nearly a million dollars in construction quote fees, and four point six, four, twenty-six point three million in the total assessed evaluation of taxable property in the city. A tax rate increase of three cents has been proposed to this budget, resulting in annual increase of approximately ninety-two dollars and seventy-six cents for the average property owner, and the average, uh, fine as property assessed at two hundred and sixty-three thousand one hundred and ninety-four dollars and fifty-one cents. Thank you for the review of today's budget, introduced, and as always, the mayor and administration, both of us, you and I, and the public.
Thank you. So at this time, we are preparing, uh, to open the meetings to, for public comment on resolutions only. In any manner, we have public issues to address the council on these resolutions only. Please come up, you have five minutes.
Hi, yes, Danielle Moore, can I put it, uh, start off with twenty-three, due to where, uh, with the budget, we just saying, I just heard something mentioned on three, three police officers, uh, got paid or something, and then just hit my head, wow, that would be, why we have three police officers on standby, is this related to the budget or somebody scared in here tonight?
Danielle, stick to the question about the budget.
Excuse me, what, it was announced, it's where they.
The budget I mentioned, like I said, it just the highlights, and Mr. Cruz just highlighted part of the budget is to.
I know what he said, and like I said, he mentioned.
You know what to do with the prices of the police.
Yeah, that's all you had to do, not waste my time, and like I said, due to I was asking what the day.
Okay, what's your time? What can I ask?
Then, all right, then, like I said, with the litter and 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 all, due to where, what, where, come on, what you were speaking, what you were ruling, putting up signs, things, dumping, littering, 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 five hundred dollar fine, are you following them rules or not? And then, like I said, yes, you're getting money for it, but what, are you following your rules? You'll be seeing later on what I presented, due to where going due to situation I was speaking on for Mr. Paul Dean at Three Oxford Street with people dumping garbage, but do New Brunswick Police Department give out tickets? Wow, I had video on someone before, literally taking, what, what, garbage out their vehicle, representing, calling New Brunswick, oh, no, 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 that's not a crime, not, I think it's time for you council members to get into a meeting, what is, what you're saying is the law and what is not the law with the police department. A lot of things you're saying is not matching the rules of what New Brunswick Police Department is saying. Now, so like I said, is it, is, people will put garbage on somebody else's, uh, property? You, you saying it's not, but like I said, what does New Brunswick Police Department do? Nothing. You can have the video, like I said, we will be speaking on that matter, due to where, what, I don't think it was right, or what Mr. Dean was going through, because people dropped it. Well, like I said, the budget is including litter and pollution, uh, litter and litter pollution going all over, due to where, what, same thing with oil, did I just do, the videotaping, what, people putting oil going down storm drains, what, all it goes down to the river, or what to use, what you were, oh, sorry, that's not a crime, but like I said, what you're saying by resolution was something approved or not? I really think you need to get together with New Brunswick Police Department, and Mr. Carr was saying for so many years, what you're saying and what the police department is saying is not matching, and do I have the evidence to prove that? I will certainly do, because we will be getting to it. Thank you.
Anybody else from the comment on the resolution, only? You have to come into the microphone, and you have five minutes, you have time up.
Hi, uh, April, I just wanted to make a quick comment that I'm very glad to hear that there is a, from a set aside, personal water management, that can be increasingly according as the years go on, and climate change can be asked for, of course, our committee, and just kind of a question of where can we find the, uh, total budget for review? Is that the website?
Yes. Sorry, we said, this is, we will be publishing, uh, what we have, we have.
Mr. Mike, tell us specifically.
Can you tell us, because I want to wait out, we're, uh, put the budget out?
So when we advertise the budget document, or the, uh, on the newspaper, we will publish it, it'll be available in the collection office and in the library.
Thank you. Okay. Do we have a, a timeline for when you think that's up to you?
I would say probably, because we, we have some other ordinances that are affecting pieces of the budget, so it could be in the next couple of weeks, probably.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Oh, I'd like to speak on two, three, the one Danielle Moore started with, the police officers.
I'm so sorry.
Are you talking, yeah, I was going to say, because I can't hear you, understand what you're saying, they're, they're close to the microphone, and they hear you, and I, is your question related to the resolutions, that's first of all?
I'd like to speak to the resolution.
Which one?
That Danielle. Is it two, three, the one that Danielle Moore spoke about?
The budget for the city?
Yeah.
Introduction of the budget?
With the police officers, correct.
It's not, the budget is for the whole city.
For the whole city?
It includes the hiring of thirty police officers.
And it has police officers included. Does a budget include the three police officers standing in the back of the room during a council meeting?
These are new officers.
Huh?
The budget includes new officers, the ones that I do have part of the police department already, so. Any other question?
Yeah, how much, how much money are, are we wasting to have three police officers sitting in the back of the room?
You can ask that question after in the public portion part of the meeting, okay?
Okay, I, well, I, I hope we're not.
Anybody else?
Okay.
Anybody else? On the resolution, only?
Well, Council, Charlie Cradville, once again, I appreciate, uh, the separate hearing on the, uh, community benefits agreement, and for you asking for some information about the budget, that, that addressed all my questions on those items, and the only one that I have questions about now is the final one, ending in four fifty-three. I'm curious if somebody can enlighten me as to the purpose of the ground penetrating radar. What are you looking for with that? Uh, is that trying to find, uh, sources of contamination or leaks or what?
That twenty-six is something I'm, I'm in the, this is a, a proof of street closing, so I don't know if it has anything to do with what you're asking at this point, so I could find out that later on.
I, I'm.
The resolution is only asking for, um, for us, well, for them to be able to, to be there.
Yeah, I'll draw your attention to the resolution, whereas the city, the city in Brusco is saying East Con, contracted by Avanti, which is working for the U S E P A, will be using ground penetrating radar, G P R, as part of a pilot program sponsored by the U S E P A, to demonstrate the use of G P R as an alternative to more invasive measures. I've read some more invasive measures.
And I'm just.
For what?
And I'm just telling you that the resolution that we have in front of us, although it's really that is to, the resolution is to approve the request for street closing, it has nothing to do with what you're asking.
It absolutely does have to do with, in your, your resolution, I don't.
I don't have an answer to you, we're not, we're not going to go back and forth, I have, I have a question, I don't have an answer to you, so, can we move on?
Okay, well, I imagine some of the professionals here for the city council, you can answer the question. You're approving temporary road closures to enable the use of ground penetrating radar, a pilot program that the federal government wants to do here.
I would like that information.
Explore this alternative, can you tell me why? What is it an alternative to?
I'm not going to answer that now, because.
Why not?
Because I don't consider that to be part of the resolution, but I'm going to answer when they go on, you know, you know.
When?
When I get, eh, to the point that I, I know what, either it's today or.
Okay, well, they're going to do this tomorrow.
Anything else? Anything else, any, or, or you?
I only want to ask about the one resolution, I have found, I've heard nothing so far.
Okay.
Thursday, April eighteenth is tomorrow. You want to close a couple of streets to use ground penetrating radar? Can anyone in the city government tell me why?
It has nothing to do with the resolution.
It's in the resolution, yes. This is really not, not appropriate.
It is my understanding, eh, that this resolution is for the closing, Mr. Revival Advisor, it's for the closing of the street.
Right. And the resolution itself cites ground penetrating radar as the reason for the closing. So don't you think that it'd be in the public address for you to just briefly explain what that is and why it's going on, uh, tomorrow on Joyce Villaraven Avenue between Handy and Baldwin Street, if for no other reason so that residents can understand what's happening?
Anything else, Mr.?
You don't see that as an important question?
Anything else? You see it one way, I see it another way. Any other questions that you might have?
No, this is the only one, and I'm, I'm frankly embarrassed to be a New Brunswick resident and have a council that won't answer why they're closing the street. You, you want to take action, you have a public hearing.
You just like want to hear something else, the answer is there, it's telling you that they want to do a testing, it's telling you the answer.
I'm asking what it is, what is ground penetrating radar? Do you know, or you're just not telling us, or?
I don't know.
You don't know what it is?
I will find out.
Okay, will you find out before or after it's already done?
At some point.
Before or after the experiment is done?
Wow.
Okay, Mr. Carr, anything else?
This is the only one I want to answer to, and I'm shocked that you can't just ask one of the professionals. Why can't the D P W director, I guess maybe he's not here, but, uh, why can't the water utility tell us? This is a, a agreement with the federal government, is this got to do with water contamination? You don't know? Doesn't matter?
Already gave you an answer, Mr. Carr.
You did not, you absolutely did not, respectfully, I asked a simple question.
Respectfully, I gave you an answer that you don't want to hear, but already, already stated what I was going to say, I'm not going to say anything else about it.
Right, you didn't say anything, you said you don't know.
That has nothing to do, I explained to you, it has nothing to do with my view with the resolution, so I'm done.
Okay, well, read the resolution would be my.
Anything else?
I would say you should read the resolution, and if you don't know why you're closing the street, you should find out, and you should tell the public.
Anything else?
I think that's reasonable. I think that's reasonable, and I'm upset that you can't answer a simple question, when the answer's probably somewhere in the room, so, uh, again, good job having a separate here for the, the other resolution, good job asking about the budget, unfortunately, uh, inadequate and unacceptable job of answering my question about this resolution, thank you.
Anybody else? Do you want to second, or second resolution? Do you want the resolution? Can I have some more, like, Sania, though?
Yes, with the exception of eleven reps.
Do we know then? Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Councilmember Fludding?
Yes.
Councilmember Gaston?
Yes.
Councilmember Sephora Lovett?
Yes.
Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Council President Escobar?
Yes, except, I stayed on twenty-three.
Do we know then?
At this time, people will open the door for public comments, uh, when it, when the updates, um, as I explained at the last meeting, we had been hearing, eh, a lot of comments about the police not doing their job, and tickets, and they're gonna do this, and they're gonna do that, so, I, um, Lieutenant Hoover, if you're booking us, I don't want details, I just want the number of some of the stratigraphy activities that have happened to the police department within the next, you know, the first quarter, whichever, whatever it may be.
Sorry, Councilwoman, uh, first order, two thousand twenty-four, five thousand somersaults, all purpose zones, moving to be working in the park.
Thank you, so, we are, eh, we are giving something. The next one is, eh, there was some questions about EMS, eh, Mr. Doolis?
Yes, it was S who provides the ambulance service for the city, and what is the procedure? The ambulance service is provided by Robert Johnson, the procedure is that there is a call service, it's routed to Rutgers Dispatch Center, the dispatch center connects the call with the Robert Johnson Communication Center, where the trained operator provides support to the caller, dispatches and ambulance services where appropriate.
Thank you, so, giving that. Wanted to take this time to congratulate Eric, from the, our own, from the New Brunswick Department, he received, uh... I'm sure the cell operator, so congratulations, I also wanted, eh, name and congratulate the recent promotion for the New Brunswick Fire Department, um, Theodore Wright Junior was promoted to captain, and only Martinius was promoted to lieutenant, um, so congratulations to all of that. Also, uh, before going to the public parties, I wanna, eh, wish Councilman, my wife, Sania, to have a... So, at this point, we wanna open the door for public comment only?
Well, I, I, I need to interrupt one moment, just for purposes, the record, when we did, uh, roll call on the resolutions, I believe you stayed, were staying from twenty-three?
Yeah, you said that, I, I, there were one.
Right, it was twenty-four, for the record, we meant twenty-four.
I meant twenty-four, not like, I don't think the other one, twenty-four, right? Thank you, that's right, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you for keeping time.
I, I, I try.
At this time, we are referring, uh, to open the door for public comments, you have two five minutes, one person up, and you're gonna go to the public, just like, let's say, council, and also, speaking in the public comment part of the meeting, Mr. Matt?
Bobby.
Yes, Mr. Bobby.
Hi, guys, I will be speaking for Mr. Dean, as the last time, who I don't wanna start opening, he's still a little weak now, but, aside to say, like I said, even though we did make good, good out of it, I accept that Mr. Dean was arrested in prison, what, three or four weeks, while, for these, these people squatters, and these people you allowed in New Brunswick to litter and to destroy people's property without going to jail, like I said, why don't you go after these real damn criminals in New Brunswick? But like, and like I said, due to where, what, while Mr. Dean was not present, due to where, what, March twenty-nine, I think that was posted, uh, Good Friday, due to where, break in his house, the video, uh, that was car nine twenty-nine, and that was April seventh, uh, car nine, uh, ten, that's Officer Hessler, Hessler, if I pronounced his name, two eighty-one, I had him come and take a walk inside Mr. Dean's house, three Oxford Street with his body camera, and I put it up on Facebook, due to where, come on, Mr. Dean's house was not like that, with beer, shit, and all over his house, destroyed, destroyed, and like I said, while he was gone, yes, like I said, the Lord, the Lord, it, it was for purpose, I told you, due to where, I wasn't gonna be able to handle it, because my mom was passing away, due to where, but wow, I still did the Lord work that, when my mom did pass away, April third, I could, I still did I was garbage and everything. Then happens today, I, with him present, I had, uh, today, that was, uh, car nine eleven, was also, was Officer Hessler, that's two, two eighty-one, also, while he was present, received the people in there, now, like I said, I was very disappointed, I explained the same thing to Mr. Dean, due to where, what, that was the Lord working with me, now, I'm going to show you where, like I said, I teach people, wow, you help others, you're helping yourself, because when you need a blessing, the helping hand will come to you. Now, I will show you, due to where, I know I can work with Mr. Dean, due to where, what, how sometimes he might say, oh, no, don't let me do this, no, 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 but I, I'm gonna show you, same thing I showed the inspectors, where eighty percent of the garbage from his property that was not done by him, because I told you, what, he can't lean over or whatever, with these squatters spilling in his house, going through his house, it's clean now. Like I said, I thank the city and the company, the guards company, working with me, other than Monday, while the gentleman cussing me out, not wanting to take Mr. Dean's garbage, oh, I'm the, I'm the one doing this, blah, 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 oh, they said he got written up, I hope he did, but like I said, cussing at me, while, because some people hate to see people do good, but like I said, due to where, what, it's clean now, due to where Mr. Dean told me he has nowhere to go now, like I said, that's why I gathered up team members, due to where I can't lift anything heavy with my, with my arm, but like I said, whatever I was able to help, due to where, what, where his property is clean, due to where, like I said, he shouldn't have had to do the time for what these squatters are doing, and I put it up on Facebook and showed the video, how they destroyed his house, the whole first floor, what, come on, what if the police are gonna start doing this, and honestly, I know why, we've been over this several times, what, due to where some are illegal, they can do whatever they want? And please, I'm, like I said, I have nothing against anyone being illegal, but, like, like I said, be treated equal, then with the squatters, due to where, from, from, going from his house, now they're right at the street, due to where on Hell Street, working on a blue house over there, what, we're gonna have two fires on Jersey Avenue with squatters, but like I said, come on, with his condition, he is not the one doing all of this garbage, but like I said, the blessing for his property is to be clean now, where, what, volunteers coming, everything is not about money, because like I said, sometimes you gotta, and the hope that you made it to this age, to, to, to help of, of, of others, I know I did bless you what I did do, but like I said, due to where, wow, now, I hope we can go further, due to where, what, understanding, I, I let the officer know on, on record reporting, due to where who's allowed in his house, due to where, what, since his body passed, no one to take care of him.
Thank you, Sania.
But like I said, please, from here, I have the police report, we'll go further.
Next, anybody else?
A life away today, when I got released last night at ten o'clock, one was living in my house at ten AM, ten PM, and this morning, there was another one there at six o'clock, living in the house.
Okay, um, thank you.
So, this is a situation that is just ongoing.
Thank you, and I, I know Mr. Lieutenant Hoover is here, and I don't have his book to me, but thank you, time yourself, or, um...
Thank you, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Anybody else want to phone, or we should, or, or, so, I'm... Anybody else?
I'm going to go back to the, the rest of the state, of one of these years, I'm going to have a house on country, down street, Mr. Dean, it's called, I have, I have, two family home, it's vacant, I don't want these squatters, and I'll take the loss, you can't look the other way anymore, it's all over in the southern part of that area, from French Street, Somerset Street, up to Jersey Avenue, La Pita, La Pita's New School, hundreds of them are there, you know, it's been ongoing, now, they're all at the exelon station, they come down the street, there's a yard, there's beans, there's food, there's garbage, there's no one to spend, really, we all want social determinants of health, I've studied professionally on a registered nurse for forty-nine years, but enough is enough, you have to support the bill by two senators in Humboldt, and I wouldn't say in county, it's S two seventy five, arrest the squatters, they, they don't have rights, we're paying the taxes, the water bill, the insurance, everything, for the residents, so I'd like to have a response from you, in terms of a solution, not me figure it out, you have to, you have, single-handedly we cannot do it, you collectively can't.
Just so you know, like, eh, in the past, when it was called towards our situation, the police took off, and the police have come to that house, and to that area over seven days, they have arrested people, they, they, it was driving, they must have, some people was there, so, eh, have you called the police when the situation in your house happened, did you call the police and they didn't know that this was...
No, no, I did not call right then and there, because I don't know exactly when it happened, but then when I looked carefully to go mow the grass, I see that there's socks with its rhythm at mine, that's not a talk.
So, our, so, Lieutenant Hoover is here, he's visiting, so, we, we, we visit, but they have you, they have you knowing they're, they, they, it's...
It's, it's all over.
Yes.
It's from Bethany Street, Alexander Street, all the way over to East Nanterre, it's, it's just, and, the things that were on Jersey Avenue, they were also...
Man, can I get your information after me?
Sure. Okay, then, can you, can you share?
Yes, I just may also add, um, in my day job, I do work in legislature, and I think the legislature has become aware of squatter issues, it's not just a municipal issue, because unfortunately, the way that some of the states' statutes are written, uh, it does kind of am driving global law enforcement, and their response, and the type of response that they give to squatters, uh, and so, uh, I'm hopeful that the legislative law is issued, uh, certainly it's something that we, as a lobby, can bring to our state legislators, uh, to make sure that they know this is a big issue for our residents, and we're actively, I'm gonna have.
Thank you, absolutely. I see no more deals?
Yes, please.
That's good, yeah. You're already school?
Excuse me?
You're already, well...
Excuse me, no, I did not, that was where Mr. Dean, Dean, Dean had me speaking for him, due to I told you he's two weeks, he was just released on the same...
That's why I was hiding.
That's why I was standing beside him, but, okay, I hope my time starts now, thank, thank you, more, due to I will continue on with Mr. Dean, like I said, with all the fines, he said, due to where, hopefully, with the time of nowadays that he spent in jail, almost four weeks, due to where, he's saying, I, due to where I can't go in his further business, but I'm hoping the amount of time he did, it reduces all the fines that he should not have been charged for regardless, due to where I gave the evidence, due to where, to, uh, and showed the picture to Lieutenant Hoover, but like I said, please, why don't you start arresting these real damn criminals in New Brunswick, and not just, uh, uh, others, where I will continue on with my situation, when, when they put handcuffs on him, now I can see the final specialist for, for my arm, now going through with the, also with the damage, where you tore my shoulder in relocation, dislocated my arm, causing nerve damage, due to where they're compared, now it's triggering with my neck, and damaging with my nerve, and it compares that, due, due to where the MRI is not related to what happened in two thousand two, and like I said, now I'm just getting over with my mother, like I said, you will be hearing from your lawyer, my lawyer, on this case with suing New Brunswick Police Department for pain suffering, due to where telling me that, what, I gotta deal with this pain from six to twelve months, due to where, what, I'm taking two to three times more pain than medicine, and then what, with this officer, wow, honestly, wow, it's been four, four meetings now. Now, would you please tell me, this is the fourth time I'm asking you, President Escobar and Vice President Anderson, wow, was, uh, uh, Officer Alexander Yunes, that's three twenty-six, nine, that drives nine sixteen, was he suspended with pay or not? You, this is the fourth time, you still haven't answered me, please, had, was he suspended with pay or not? Why haven't you answered? Either one of you, you still don't have any words? Wow, like I said, please, just wanted to tell the truth, and like I said, please, you council members, Lord, can you answer my last prayer, and I'm gonna say again, time for you to go. Would you please ask Lieutenant Hoover, wow, if someone is a wom, if someone is a woman that is brought in handcuffs, do, are they allowed to be checked by a male officer, or do they have to wait for a female officer?
Lieutenant, you remember they said, oh, you come in, and they just had a question, a few of those question and answers?
Like I, like I said, oh, you, believe me, you will have your, you will have your day recovering for officers who commit crime, and like I, like I said, believe me, you saw magical powers work with the help of Mr. Dean, believe me, you're gonna see it, like I said, time for you, no good, dishonest council members, to get out of here, you're destroying New Brunswick, because like I said, no, no, it, it, it's not like that, the way I was treated by him, wow, saying that, I was a criminal, yeah, he tried to charge me with aggravated assault, yeah, uh, Detective Walker, said, no, 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 this ought to be counted, but like I said, I'm still disappointed with Walker, saying, ooh, I started that whole thing, what was the police call on February first over to Walgreens? Someone with a gun, it wasn't me, because I was just walking from police headquarters, and what, due to where, what, he was getting threatened over there, and he tried to blame the whole story on me, oh, yes, like I said, New Brunswick Police Department will be seeing a very big lawsuit for my pain and suffering, where I was the victim, but like I said, you hate to see people, some people hate to see somebody do something good, but I don't do anything good to make me look good, I do good because that's what the Lord tells me to do, help others, like I said, I teach others, you help someone else, you're helping yourself, due to where, what, like I said, why would he settle with this pain that I'm having, where I can't even damn sleep, no matter what position my arm is in, why? Because of what he had did to me at police headquarters, while making me damn sit there ten to fifteen minutes in pain, crying, when he released the damn one that assaulted me, attacked me? Please, what kind of people are you that keep defending people's, who's sworn to follow the law, and when they break the law, what do you do? You cover their ass? Nothing but a bunch of devils.
Yes?
Hi, uh, from the House, people from East Nanterre, um, there's a few issues that I wanna bring up, and we have time for all of them, one is, uh, is that I brought up two meetings ago, um, about, uh, natural, or, or individuals, I, I have a code word for, for, and, 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 to make sure they're available, uh, directly, for, for quality, um, what I mentioned a few meetings ago, is that there are increasingly now are more kinds of, uh, and, 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 uh, there's not necessarily air quality or temperature relation, but it's, you know, it's, you know, sign, and I'm wondering if there's any update that you're aware of, um, or plans to, um, to show they're available during those things, instances, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I appreciate that, um, and then something else I previously asked about, I love, uh, the, the, is... answer is, um, just, you know, the, 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 I think it was, uh, there was some, uh, the, 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 so, so far, the last time I called the update, it was breaking up fine. And I feel also another from, in terms of, when last about the, the daytime, I know that, oh, that's daytime, lawyers nighttime, I think I would talk a little bit about it, they, they take it, there are, there are some of these situations, and they're trying to address them as best they could, and, and also following the statute from the state. So, so this is, you know, a, it's an ongoing matter, I'm sure that that knows, you know, uh, it's ongoing, I know that they have been so improved when, uh, a new thing is coming up to the, uh, office, uh, machine, and the initiatives that are happening to, to, to some of the issues I'm aware of, I see. Yeah, I, I'm sure that it's an ongoing process, and lots of work to be done, and I'm just saying, I'd love to hear more about it, if that's, you know, in the future. Um, I think it's really, you know, great that has been, or maybe that's, you know, had more significant updates from staff members on specific, uh, programs or resolutions, or, you know, in response to previous questions such as, I'd love to hear more of that, um, so I guess, I'd just admire that you have someone back to talk more about these programs. That would be very helpful. Um, and then a, a new issue that I'd like to, um, bring to the council's attention, uh, that, you know, hopefully we will love, that they, um, welcome, you know, positive things opposed to just throwing out lots of bad things. Um, I'm not sure if you're aware of a major ordinance that was passed, which was a city last week, um, for range choice voting, um, which is a, a democracy reform, which is the way that we, uh, that we vote, um, by allowing voters to rank candidates in the world, that means it's supposed to just be equal to one candidate on the ballot. Uh, there's lots of good things that I would say about range choice voting, I'm not sure if, you know, if there's any level to the, the, or, 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 what that is, uh, but I think that, uh, it's something that I'd, I'd love for us to consider here in Brunswick, um, or, you know, it's, uh, something that's relatively, sounds relatively New Jersey, but it's been used in countries like Australia, Ireland, for over a hundred years, and there's, uh, it's used at the state level in Mexico and Maine, and it's used in quite a few cities, and it's been used qualities across the country, um, in places that have been used in the, in, to, uh, increase government accountability to voters, to be seen, to be, to more women of color being, are sending in government, so. Curious if there's, uh, you know, if any council members are familiar with this, uh, democracy reform already, uh, have you been on this, have there been a witness to talk about pursuing this in the process? Okay, I would, I would love to, to talk more about it. Appreciate it, thank you.
Good evening, what's good? Charlie Cradaville. My first question is for Councilman Fleming through the chair. Councilman Fleming, are you an elder and ordained minister with the Abundant Life Family Worship Center?
This is not gonna answer the question.
He's not gonna answer the question. There's a lot of that going around.
Do you remember these, I called you coming before, you were reading, so you asked.
All right, well, I'll just draw to your attention the city website, which includes a little blurb about Councilman Fleming. It says, uh, you know, he's an, an elder and ordained minister with the Abundant Life Family Worship Church in New Brunswick, and so I'll keep a copy and hand a cop, a bunch of copies to the clerk, just so you have this, and I'd like an answer by the next meeting, whether or not this is accurate. If it's inaccurate, it should be removed from the city website. And I can't for the life of me figure out why Councilman Fleming wouldn't just answer the question. Causes me to have some concerns. I know, you know, Council President, you abstained from the vote on the Community Benefits Agreement, presumably because you're employed by the Youth Advocate Program, and that presents a conflict of interest for you. I'll note that Councilman Fleming voted yes for a development project being pushed by the Abundant Life Family Worship Center earlier this year. So if he's an elder and ordained minister with that entity, uh, that would strike me as the type of thing he should not have voted affirmatively or negatively on, but rather should have recused himself on. So, um, I think this is an important question to get answered. I don't know why it's been so hard. I've tried to ask him outside of these meetings, and he has refused. I've now asked him inside of this meeting, and he has again refused. This is not the behavior of a public servant, uh, and I continue to be concerned about the cost that taxpayers have borne because of the sexual harassment lawsuit against Mr. Fleming, that somehow the city was, uh, you know, selected to pay his bills, even though it had nothing to do with his alleged public service, nothing to do with his role as a councilman. I don't know what's going on here, but I don't think that someone who can't answer simple questions and is using public resources to pay their legal bills when accused of sexual harassment, I don't think that should be going on here, and I hope you agree. And I'd be curious if you or your colleagues have any comment on the fact that Mr. Fleming is apparently seeking reelection to this council. Do you support his reelection, Council President?
I'm not making any comments. Any key notes?
Okay, well, I hope you reconsider that, and you do ultimately make some comments. I appreciate finally getting some answers on the ambulance service here in New Brunswick. I'll note that it was last month when Numie Simmons was murdered. The murder remains unsolved, and, uh, according to the timestamp video that Danielle, uh, broadcast, it took more than twenty minutes for that second ambulance to arrive on the scene. There were two victims, several hundred feet apart, only one had, uh, ambulance service responsive within that first twenty-three minutes, according to the timing, and, um, it in fact was not Robert Wood Johnson who came through with that second ambulance, it was the North Brunswick Township Volunteer First Aid Squad. So I'd like to note, does New Brunswick have any arrangement with North Brunswick Township, or was that something they just made out of the goodness of their hearts because, uh, there was a need in New Brunswick that Robert Wood was not able to meet?
I would find out, but, uh, was it mentioned to the, 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 to the?
I would appreciate that very much. I think this is serious cause for concern. Um, I also asked a couple of questions. I've asked them several times now and have not gotten a response regarding the fire director. Uh, in 2014, he was driving a vehicle, struck three children in a crosswalk, the city was sued. Uh, I believe the case was settled. I asked how much the settlement was, how much the, the city, uh, paid for that? Is there an answer?
So, Shannon?
Yes, I did look into that, now the Council President, the cases were settled, there were two claims, one settled for a hundred and ten thousand, and the other one settled for seven hundred and twenty-five thousand. That's inclusive of, um, the defense course that you.
Okay, and you'll note that, uh, the fire director's ability to drive city vehicles was revoked after that, for some reason was reinstated in 2017. He's been in at least three crashes since then, all involving city vehicles, and then at some point, uh, apparently after January ninth, uh, the city again revoked his ability to drive city vehicles. I've asked, what date were his permissions revoked? Can I get an answer to the question that I asked?
You asked that question before.
You have.
Police gave you that already, so thank you.
No, you haven't, I just want the date, that's all. Will you get me that?
Thank you, you already had that answer.
I did not.
Thank you, time yourself. Anybody else on the phone?
Just don't lie about things.
Anybody else on the phone?
If I got the answer, I would admit it, I did not get the answer.
Lieutenant Hoover, you're done, thank you.
Have a good evening.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I just like, I just like, you know, I'm gonna be doing an Oprah request through the chair to Councilwoman Petra Gaskins, she took a photo of me. I will be Oprah requesting that photo and getting a copy of that, and the young lady that was sitting there, I'll find out her name, I'll get the photo that she took of me as well, but to have three police officers, I'm absolutely disgusted to have three police officers in the room. At one point, four uniformed police officers, not counting Lieutenant Hoover, which makes it five police officers. Um, so much crime out in New Brunswick. Did, did someone feel startled, maybe because somebody was wearing a mask? Did any of you call extra police because somebody was wearing a mask? Wasn't it you people that if you didn't wear a mask during COVID-19, your party was arresting people on sight? Now, now someone comes in wearing a mask? Extra police presence?
You could address, you know, your comments to me.
I, I never addressed it to anyone else other than you. Was there someone else?
Oh, you cannot to anybody else, just keep looking at me, that's possible, thank you.
I, I'm allowed to look around the room as I'm addressing you. Um, thank you, Ms. Escobar, for trying to police where I can look and where I cannot look. Um, Councilman Fleming, is that true? Is that true that you are a part of the, you are an elder for the church? Through the chair to Councilman Fleming?
You already, you already answered that, it's not answering any questions, and if you knew that you have to ask?
According to Tap into New Brunswick, Tap into New Brunswick did a story on Councilman Fleming, where they accused Councilman Fleming of exposing himself to a woman as her son walked into the room. Um, as one man to another man, through the chair, Councilman Fleming, oh, again, supposedly a God-fearing man, since you claim to be an elder, along with being a public servant. Would you like to answer, hey, the newspaper was wrong with these allegations, and here's my public statement? Or do you want to deny the allegations, or would you like to admit to them?
I sustain it, he has meetings. Councilman Fleming, he's not addressing any of those questions.
I hope Councilman Fleming does not seek reelection. I think it's an abhorrent thing to expose yourself to a woman as her son was walking in the room. Absol- absolutely disgusting, and we have women on this council? Don't, don't you want to not say anything about it? I'll through the chair to Councilwoman Petra, uh, Gaskins, isn't that a little more concerning than somebody wearing a mask in a public meeting? Would you like to take the opportunity to defend women who have to come to work every day with abusive men abusing their power and authority for personal and sometimes sexual gain? Would you like to say something about that, Ms.?
There is no comment, so this time, continue your, your comment.
That, no, it's, it's, it's part of my statement, you don't have to interrupt my statement, Ms. Escobar. I understand low IQ people might not be able to understand that, but if you can please not break the rules of order, when it's my time to speak, I have the floor.
I, I would like to say something.
Uh, not, not when it's my time to speak, the Supreme Court has already ruled on that Loesman versus VRB Supreme Court ruling, says when it's my time to speak, you're not allowed to mute me, interrupt me, throw me out the meeting. So I'd like to thank Lieutenant Hoover, the moment I let him know that there's no nefarious activity going on, I'm just here to do my First Amendment protected activity right away. The cameras were shut, shut off, I thank you for that, because it's intimidating enough for people to come and speak to their government without fear of, I thought the detective was handling it very well, without the need of three other people. Do you guys, do you guys think that the detective is incapable of his job, that you had three more other officers accompany him? Don't worry, detective, I thought you were doing a great job, you, you were fine. He, he didn't even need to be here, but he, he was fine. How much time do I have left?
How much time does he have?
Council President, thirty seconds.
We got thirty seconds.
Thirty seconds? Would you like to ask, would you like to apologize to that woman, Councilman Fleming? Would you like to have some integrity? Would you like to ask God for forgiveness? Did you expose yourself to that woman and her child? Councilman Fleming, as a man to another man, did you expose yourself to that woman? Would you like to make, would you like to admit to that? I find it absolutely, just if somebody accuses me of something so heinous, I'd say, hey, that never happened, um, this person.
Thank you.
Okay. His silence speaks volumes.
I'm like, you know, stop, just take a motion to adjourn, can you?
Motion.
Councilmember Rebecca Nana? Councilmember Perkins? Councilmember Fleming? Councilmember Gaskins? Councilmember Cora Lovett? Councilwoman George Lee? Council Vice President Anderson? Council President Escobar?
Have a good day, guys. Have a good day, detective. I don't, brothers. Yes, sir. Jersey watching, you should, uh, Jersey watching. I'll email you as soon as I go home. All right, guys, let's get out of here. I just recorded a, a council meeting in New Brunswick. Hey, Charlie, who do I speak about the police not filling my Oprah requests? Because they said it's filled, but, uh, they said it's filled, it should be, it's sent to me, but it never got to me.
City clerk, he's a custodian of record.
City clerk? I'm leaving now, but before I leave, can, can I, can I just ask something from the city clerk about the Oprah request that I made? Office hours, right? No problem. No problem. I thought you did a good job just by yourself, detective. They didn't need, it's insulting, three, four people, for what? For what, man? Come on, Detective James. I lo-, I love you, brother, man. I'm, I'm not here for no nefarious, no nefarious activities. Thank you, brother. Have a good day, Ms. Gaskins. Have a good day, Lieutenant Hoover. Thanks for not giving me a hard time, brother. Well, I'm not supposed to thank you, but.
Appreciate it, bud, thank you.
I'll, I'll see you, man. Okay, guys? Here we are. Believe in New Brunswick.